Yeah, no, I don't time to change.
It's not once, it's not once. I be sitting at work as a couple of months.
We should call me.
I want you to know that we're getting your email.
Andy, Andy saw.
You saw.
Yes, I did. And I was like, damn, that's the one about that's the one right there.
No trust this is. You didn't get.
And I'll be under some. Security ain't doing no more. Vivian Davis, cancel.
Yeah.
Oh, my God, I'm sorry.
I think that I think it happens when the agenda changes.
Well, if it's something that is.
I think. I didn't do that is when you let hate it smells. Always turn your hands, nails and all place with my branding on. It said nine.
That's revised. Seems a lot less.
All right, folks, if you have. So I will go ahead and call this meeting to order. If we can start with a moment of silence, please. And I'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to leave. And to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God. As our mayor, if you happen to have a cell phone on, please make sure that it's off or on silent. City Clerk Domingo, he'll take role call for us, please.
Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Reed.
Here.
Jackson.
Here.
Lawler.
Here.
Davis.
Present.
Branch.
Here.
And Mayor Stein.
Here. Do I have a motion to approve on the agenda?
So move. Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, this evening, we're going to start off with a few presentations. First is an update on our senior housing project. We have Linda Colmudin and Ms. Marcia Starkey here. So ladies, the floor is yours.
Have to put on my cheaters here. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm Linda Colmudin. Marcia Starkey will follow me with some additional information for you. For many years, the community of Albion has sought opportunities to develop mid-market rate housing for older adults. We want to keep vibrant older adults in the community as well as attract seniors to live in Albion. In two thousand nineteen, the Albion Community Foundation was awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollar redevelopment grant as part of the Calhoun County Strategic Project Grant through County Senior Millage. Marcia and I serve as co-directors of this project. It's been a long time, but we're still working on this. Rio Living Services, formerly the United Methodist Retirement Communities, U M R C, and Porter Hills, has been working with the foundation and the Albion Senior Housing Initiative Commission to bring this important development to our community. The members of the Senior Housing Commission have worked tirelessly to guide this development to become a reality for Albion. I'd like to introduce you to the commission members who are able to join us tonight. So would you please stand as I call your name? Mary Slater. Eddie Ruth Williams. Karen Yankee. Tom Hunzdarfer. And Juanita Solis Kidder. Mayola Dunklin, Dave Farley, and Ken Pons weren't able to join us tonight. We also have ex officio members, local housing specialist Linda Wado and Joe Rebekki, and they're not able to join us either. Thank you for allowing us to present an update to you. I believe it was Councilwoman Jackson who asked us to do this, and we're pleased to be able to do this. So I'm going to turn this over to Marcia for a few more, more up to the minute comments. I gave you a little history, now she's going to give you more of an update.
My favorite word the last couple of weeks have been ta-da, there's something to share. I'm steerheaded, steerheaded by Representative Tim Wallbrook's office and the Community Foundation. Representative Wallbrook has submitted a proposal, the federal appropriations for three point five million dollars to support the senior project in Albion. The, this significant grant, this significant grant is meant to address the core infrastructure costs for this project, including water, sewer, gas, electricity, roads, et cetera, so that it's not to financially burden the city. The project will benefit the city of Albion by creating housing for older adults. This in turn will expand availability, family stock in the city as Albion prepares for future business development and growth in the region. We can confirm it is not the Washington Gardener location. It is anticipated to be in the residential part of town near Haven Road. But until we complete the purchase in the coming months or two, we are respecting the confidentiality of the current owner. So the three point five million is on the list. Then, as you know, you've accepted other ones in a hopefully a couple of months, it'll come through the money and then you can vote to accept it. So there's no voting that has to be done tonight, but we just wanted to tell you about the three point five million dollars. We're very excited, so we're inching closer and closer here, so.
Getting closer to that finish line.
Yep. Any questions?
No question but say congratulations.
Yes.
Yeah.
Keep saying the ta-tas and the woo-hoo.
We were pretty excited when it came up on the list, you know, so yes, wanted to share with all of you, so thank you.
Thank you for the update. Appreciate you very much. I just wanted to make sure we don't have any other questions or comments for either Ms. Colmudin or Mrs. Starkey.
Love to ask her a bunch of questions, but you know, she can't reveal that. I know, you know, just give us updates, okay, thank you. Thank you that all of you came out tonight on this beautiful night, you know, could stay at home, but thank you so much.
All right, next is our proclamation for the Fathers and Sons Picnic, which will be held this Saturday, June eighth. Whereas the purpose of the Fathers and Sons Picnic is for the fathers to build stronger relationship with their sons. And whereas it provides an opportunity for young men who, for whatever the circumstances, do not have a father in their life. And whereas the organizers of the Fathers and Sons Picnic would like to see the older and younger generations having a better understanding of each other. And whereas the Fathers and Sons Picnic will be held this Saturday, June eighth, twenty twenty four, from eleven AM to six PM at Victory Park in Albion. And whereas there will be food, games, and different activities for the men and boys to enjoy. And whereas the Fathers and Sons Picnic will be held annually, or has been held annually since two thousand eleven. Although the focus is on fathers and sons, it is important to note that families, women, and girls are more than welcome to attend. Whereas this year's event is in recognition of Tillman Cornelius and Mike Juricek for their years of service to the Albion community. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Victoria Garcia Snyder, Mayor, along with the City Manager Haley Snyder, and the Albion City Council encourage everyone to support the Father and Sons Picnic and pay tribute to all the fathers and men who are members, mentors, and positive role models as we celebrate Father's Day. So again, this event will be held this Saturday, and everyone is welcome to attend. Let's just keep our fingers crossed for good weather. All right, uh, next we have a public hearing for our Michigan Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, funding for the North Eaton Street Sideline Improvement Project. So I will go ahead and open up this public hearing, it is seven oh nine PM. So at this time, if anybody in the gallery has comments in regards to this project and purpose, uh, you may stand and address council in three minutes is yours. No movement, I will go ahead and close our public hearing, seven oh nine PM. All right, do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four eighteen?
Some support.
Assistant City Manager.
Uh, this is to, uh, place sidewalks, I should say, in the North Eaton corridor from Watson Street up to the expressway or B Drives. Um, currently, there are no sidewalks in that area. Uh, winter time in particular, public safety, we see a lot of people walking down the street and it's extremely dangerous. I've, ever since I've worked here, I think, pushed to get sidewalks in that area. A lot of people have said that it's, it's a commercial area, you don't put sidewalks in that area, but we have a lot of people who don't have vehicles that walk, especially through that McDonald's that walk up to McDonald's. So I think this is a great idea to get these sidewalks put in in that area so that our citizens have a safe place to walk, especially if you're getting to it from work or places they need to go.
Are they going on both sides?
Yes. Yes, that is the plan, move both sides.
Excellent.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo, oh, do you have a comment?
Just the comments, uh, maybe, you know, some kind of site, please use the sidewalks. Because we're creatures of habit sometimes, so.
City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Monica.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yeah.
Yes.
Public comments at this time, if there's anybody that would like to stand and address council in regard to an agenda item. You may do so at this time. Just give us your name and address in three minutes is yours.
Good evening, Dear Brown, ten sixteen South Superior Street, regarding item F. Um, so I just reviewed the electronic, uh, agenda that went out. And I was wondering like what the timeframe is for the selection of that, because a number of these um, might not be the, be the best design for that, so I was wondering what the process was to put them before council, was there any kind of consultation with graphic designers, what's like most visible, because I know there are usually like standards for, um, like, uh, like visibility when you're reading certain texts from a distance, different colors, those kinds of things. So I was wondering, was there any professional input or kind of, uh, process to consider the proposed, um, water tower logo design, so, um, yeah, that's it. Um, you know, because one of the things I guess in addition to that, like, I don't, again, I don't know what the timeframe is, but this could have been a good opportunity for, um, citizen engagement. We could, you know, you could kind of contest for local students, or like I said, it had some kind of panel around that, so I'm just curious how those designs ended up as being the options being considered, um, and what the timeframe is, and is there a chance for the council to go back and, um, let's just spend a little bit more time considering those. Thank you.
And anybody else that would like to stand and address council in regards to an agenda item? All right, seeing no movement, we will move on. Do I have a motion to approve of the consent calendar items?
So move.
Support.
So along with our May twentieth regular session minutes, uh, the study session, we also have a new, which is the application for the Juneteenth celebration, and you have that information on your desktop. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. Do I have a motion to approve of the medical marijuana grower license for nine oh two first?
Some more.
Support.
Assistant City Manager.
Uh, so this is for a new license for a building that's been used for medical marijuana in the past. Um, I believe they're transferring the license, they don't, they can't transfer the license, they have to get their own license when they change owners of it, so this is, uh, a new license for a place we've used before for medical marijuana.
So as I stated in our study session, this has been approved by the planning commission. It is just now coming to council for final. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you so much. Is, uh, there a representative here today?
I thought I'm aware.
Okay.
Are, are we not worried that there's no staffing plan or, uh, business plan included in this application? Or is that a separate cover we didn't get this?
We don't, we don't give the entire oh, okay, application to you, all, all council gets is the, the face sheet of the application with the departmental sign, sign offs.
Okay.
So they, all, all the departments of the city, uh, finance, uh, planning, um, my office re- reviewed it, and we made sure there are, there is a staffing plan and business plan, they just.
It's just not signed off on by copy, so that's why.
There's multiple sign off pages, it might be signed off on a different page.
Oh, there's different versions of them.
Yeah. Yeah, we don't all sign the same page as well, we're doing it a different.
Okay, so they're multiple.
Yeah.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Madison.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
And Mayor Stein.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four fourteen, uh, to approve the proposed ballot language?
So move.
Party. Attorney Martin.
Um, so we briefly touched on this during the work session. Um, for some reason, the version that was in the packet didn't have the, the redline change. Clerk has handed out the appropriate version, so the only difference between um, the version in the packet and the one that's before you is on page one, um, it shows in subsection B what was the, what was stricken and the new language that's replacing it. The reason that we're using that version was that version was specifically requested by the Attorney General's Office, they want the resolution to contain the strikeout language and the new language. They didn't make us do that last time, it's just a new thing I've learned over the years, not the origins of the Attorney General's Office, so. Um, but in any event, the significant change that, that, um, this is going to make is the state law requires that the Board of Review meet on the second Monday in March, not the third Monday mandated by the Charter. Um, currently, the Charter mandates that the Board of Review meet for a total of twenty hours during the week. The assessor requested this change because that was a little too honorous, uh, for the board members, state law requires that they meet a total of twelve hours with, um, um, six hours being on the first day and the, uh, the rest of the week, another six hours, so. Those are the changes, um. As I said, we've got tacit approval from the AG's office, if council approves this tonight, it'll go to the governor's office and the AG's office for formal approval. Um, now that the AG has given us tacit approval, I expect them to sign off on it, and then this would appear on November's ballot.
Any questions for Attorney Hartness? City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
And Mayor Stein.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty four nineteen toward the Macintosh Park Base Two project quality test?
Some more.
Support.
Assistant City Manager.
So this is just a correction on what was already approved, I believe, uh, there was an error in bid tabulation, um, and it was item fifteen, I missed that reading report. The correct award amount is nine hundred ninety thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and fifty cents, uh, which is a difference of twenty dollars from the previous version of it. An additional twenty dollars, so it just needs to be approved again.
Any questions or comments for our Assistant City Manager? City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
And Mayor Stein.
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve adding the twenty twenty four delinquent water bills to the summer tax bill rule?
So move. Support.
Assistant City Manager.
There's not much about delinquent bills, so.
So Director Clark.
These are the bills that became delinquent as of nine one last year. So any bills that are still due, uh, as of the cutoff from last year for the water and sewer, and then also for the abatement bills for work we do on, uh, houses that are run down, we mow the grass, we take care of the trash, and so we bill the owner, and if it doesn't get paid, then as of a certain point, these bills go on the property tax bills. So we get our money no matter what, and then the, the resident who didn't pay the bill shows up on their tax bill for, um, winter or summer, and so, you know, if they don't pay it, then eventually they'll get their house repossessed, but we don't, you know, we don't want that, but it's kind of what we have to do by law, so.
Any questions or comments? Yeah. Councilmember Lawler.
Thank you so much. So, uh, just to reiterate, um, the, uh, water bills, if it's, it's, if it's in the tenant's name, does it go to the, um, the owner of the house? Or landlord?
The bills usually go to the owner on record of the property. So whoever the property tax bills, if there's a tenant living in it and the tenant doesn't pay it, it's the responsibility of the property owner.
Whoever's name is on that tax bill ultimately is responsible for that bill. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And again, so Councilmember Lawler did bring up about assistance for anybody who may need help uh, paying their bills, um, there is information to call two one one uh, to provide any type of assistance to individuals, um, but also there's information downstairs too, uh, on the reasons, so. Any other questions or comments for Director Clark?
Yep, it's.
Uh, I see that there are a couple of bills that are very large, so do you work with like more than a thousand dollars, so do you work with, you know, homeowners for that, or there may be a problem?
Um, I think we, you know, these are bills that are almost three quarters of a year old, basically. And so, um, I think we give every opportunity for people to have a a lot, you know, the ability to, the ability to pay them, but if we do the work, then we incur costs and we have to pass those along to somebody, uh, the city can't cover that, and that's why we do special billings whenever we clean up a property or have to mow the grass or get trash taken out to make the city look better. If we don't do anything, you know, grass gets high and it looks kind of rough, so by law, we have to do certain things. So, but I'm pretty sure that, um, my employees down at the window, they, they do whatever they can to help to us, you know, to a certain point, but it, it doesn't get paid by a certain point, then we have no choice, and that's just kind of the law, basically, so.
Any other questions or comments? I have a vote bar. City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Lawler.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
And Mayor Stein.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve adding the twenty twenty four delinquent receivables to the summer tax bill?
So move. Support.
And so these are delinquent receivables from the code enforcement abatement charges that we do on a yearly basis when we cut people's lawns or clean up trash, so um, same thing David was just speaking about, that at, at some point, we have to put this back on that owner of the property, so what this is doing.
Any questions or comments? City Clerk Domingo.
Councilmember Davis.
Yes.
Branch.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Jackson.
Yes.
Lawler.
Yes.
And Mayor Stein.
Yes. So next is just a discussion of our water tower logo and color options. Uh, so Assistant City Manager Kip has some colored photos for us to view, you know, it's a little difficult to get a sense of it, black and white copies.
So, um, this is not by any means what we have to do. Um, the water tower in these pictures is very similar to the water power that we will have. Um, this is one that I found online, these are logo resources that were provided to us through the RRC, uh, program that we did. Um, and so it was just options that I threw out, there's kind of a, this is kind of what it would look like and things that we could do, but we can go a whole different direction. I don't know the real timeframe, we don't have a lot of time. Um, but we do need to pick a color for the tower itself, and then what we want on the tower, if anything.
Do we have a deadline as to when a decision needs to be made?
I don't know a definite deadline, but they're in this phases now, I think they do need at least the colors um, as far as what, what they want to do for that, so.
Why don't we spend plenty on branding, correct?
Right, that's what these are all from.
Our brand colors, so.
Right.
Yeah. So comes with brand.
Well, I was just, knowing that these are brand colors, I, I get the importance of it, I'm thinking from a cost point of view, a blue Albion, which duplicates what our other water tower is, probably is going to be the least expensive option. Um, we made that decision when we painted the water tower some number of years ago.
And I, as far as the cost goes, I think a lot of this is included in the money that's already allocated for it.
Okay.
So I don't think there's a huge difference in cost, there might be depending on what we want to do, and we may find out that way, that's way more expensive than we wanted to. Uh, once we give them an idea, we might have to come back to the drawing board on that.
It's simple is always better.
Yeah. Well, a- and there is cost to replacing it at some point as well, so, where we might not have right money to do it.
Yeah, and Jackson.
And it was brought to us, I don't think, I think the last meeting or before then, um, about the color, staining, I mean fading. Said that the white was better, but I know we have.
See, the old water tower was light blue, um, and on the backside of it, it would mold. I don't think these towers, because of the way they're designed, do that as much. Um, but there's still that possibility on the backside of it looking worse than the sun side of it, um. Right now, the good part about that is that'll be towards a field that nobody can see, but that could be different in the future with industry out there or other things, so.
So that's something else to, you know, about.
Uh, just some additional feedback, um. I know we did, with the chill program, we, um, also put in place, um, a community engagement portion as well. It'd be good to see feedback from the community as far as what the community would like to see.
It'd be good to see feedback from the community as far as what the community would like to see. Um barring, we have the the actual timeframe in order, you know, I'm not sure we've got that much time, but. Um I don't recall the actual timeframe that we were under. I know they wanted us to come up with stuff fairly soon, so.
We can definitely look into when a decision has to be made and see what type of community input, what type of fashions we can get.
Right.
Yeah.
And and from my understanding this tower, as you can see on the bottom part of this, it's cement. Our tower will be that way too, so when you're talking about colors. The top will be a color, the rest of it will be cement and so. It it'll be two toned. If you make it dark and lighter cement at the bottom, so just just something about.
Thank you so much. These is really nice, um but I think we should match. Um if we do this, we need to do that one or do that one. Same as that, it should be in unison. I think. That's just my opinion.
Can can we get this on over there?
That was just done. I don't think we're gonna be doing that anytime soon. That was pretty expensive.
Yeah, I was done less than. As much as, as much as I hate to admit this, I think Garrett Brown's suggestion is a good one. It's a great idea. I think I think in fact, we have an opportunity in the next two weeks, because we have Juneteenth coming. And we could put a table out, we could have kids come and do some design work and just some ideas that sort of get people excited about it.
We got other programs starting up too. You got it on your page.
We volunteer for that job.
You've been volunteered for that.
Okay.
There's also an event um that the Parks Commission is hosting.
Yeah.
Under the water tower over here, so yeah, there's a, there's a lot of opportunity for.
You're on the Arts Commission, yeah.
Not yet.
Well, you can do that.
All right, we'll get a discussion. Uh so we're not done. Uh obviously, we will get that deadline date. And then work in accordance with that to get feedback from the community. Any other, any other discussion in that? Next, uh discussion on our street improvement options. In your packet, there's information. Um Deputy Chief Kern is here to kind of walk us through that. If you want to come on up and and give us. Kind of what your research has led you to.
Uh good evening, Council. We have heard everyone, especially you all loud and clear, that we are to try to find the best solution and the cheapest solution we're going forward. We all know our streets are pretty bad and there are some that just, we've put so many Band-Aids on them, we can't put any more Band-Aids on them. They just need to be redone, but it always comes down to money. So we recently attended a, uh it's called the Great Lakes Public Works Expo. Uh that's where all associations come together and we looked at a lot of new equipment. This was just a week and a half ago. And there is a new style patching machine that actually uses a self-leveling substance. So no more throwing asphalt down with uh chunks of stone and asphalt going everywhere, all over everybody's car. This actually fills in the gaps by itself and then levels itself out. Uh we are actually having a demonstration on it tomorrow and where we're going to start is on Cass Street. So when everybody's walking down from City Hall to Hound Park. Everybody gets to walk by this new style patching system that we're going to try on Cass Street to see how well it works. Supposedly.
You know, w- we decided not to take that walk because the street was so bad.
We only got so much. We bought a pallet. I didn't buy a truckload, so. Uh we're gonna try our best, but other municipalities are using this new system. Kent County's been using it for a couple of years now and it's phenomenal. We talked with Calhoun County Road Commission. They have sent some of their people up to to work with Kent County and they said it is amazing, this new style. It's not a repaving, but it comes very, very close. You're able to mill things down a little bit or actually instead of throwing the, like I said, asphalt on. It'll, we can actually cut it out a little, drop it down a half, an inch and then fill it in with this and it'll be flat. And so.
How long?
They say it lasts a minimum of five years. No more us throwing a patch down, snowplow comes by, scrapes it up and we're back to another pothole. Because we all know that when it snows and it fills in the potholes, our roads are actually smoother when they're full of snow. I, it's the truth. They're all driven down. It is what it is, but so. This is instead of Band-Aids, this is more like a massive gauze pad to go on some of the roads. There are some roads, Beamer being one of them. And looking with some of the contractors like from Carr Brothers and uh other excavators. It it's gotta, it's gotta come out. It it either gotta cut it out, but asphalt milling's back in, keep the dust down or something, but. The can has been kicked down the road so bad. This is where we're at today. With that, I I didn't want to like put all of the DPW's bad equipment out in 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 the public, but. We've come a long ways thanks to Director Clark uh and and the city staff and you all have let us buy a lot of good equipment. The guys that we have working for us right now are great. But we, we're we're gonna need a little more. Um we have some dump trucks that are pretty bad shape. There's two of them that can't even go down the road. They're so bad. Um and so I I I put together a packet for you all to look at. We're looking to buy two of these machines, these trailers. Um we're also looking to buy some dump trucks that are the next size up from pickup style dump truck. So it can haul quite a bit more. Um everything's done through state bid, the M I deal or Sourcewell, so we get the best rates, the best discounts. Um one of the things we're looking at getting is uh a Bobcat. We do not have the abilities to mill a street right now or anything of that nature. The other thing we're looking to do, this is kind of not just dealing with streets, it's also dealing with how we deal with snow and snow removal. We've always been before in the past, going down with a snow blade on a tractor of some sort and chipping up our sidewalks. We gotta get away from that because other municipalities use brooms. They use hydraulic brooms and they brush everything off into the streets and then it gets removed. With the Bobcat, we're able to do that because that'll be one of the things we purchase. It'll be hydraulic broom along with some of these new tractors we're looking to purchase. They're bigger than what we have. As you could see from one of the pictures, they're not held together by duct tape, like the one that we have sitting currently um. Our goal is to have three hydraulic rooms that'll be able to brush off all of downtown and all of our sidewalks around the area instead of using a snowplow. We will then be able to look at upgrading some of these other trucks uh that we do have to do our snow removal a lot quicker. Just in the equipment we bought so far that you've allowed us to buy, uh our Parks Department has been able to get it down. They have the entire city mode in three days. It it used to take five, maybe even to a Saturday to get everything done. It is amazing how quick they can get things done now. And the stuff you've allowed us to buy has been top notch. And so we're looking to keep that going. Um there's pictures of a nineteen ninety seven dump truck. That's one of the oldest ones in the fleet. Um same with the Kubota tractors. The John Deere Gators, we all see them when we're at um during the festival. We're looking to replace those and actually, once we get rid of those, uh buy the new Kubotas that last a lot longer and a lot better. To offload those to help offset. One of the other items that we're looking to get is a larger styled dump truck slash snowplow. The last time we bought a truck was in two thousand and ten. Those go for anywhere for two hundred thousand to three hundred and fifty thousand. So those are very expensive. I think with what we're doing right now and partnering with others, you buy one dump truck and put that at the very end of this purchase. Because it's gonna take, if we order now, it's gonna take probably into next spring before we actually see it according to the vendors. So I think that's something we can actually put off till next year. We've been able to take the military jump uh dump trucks or military trucks. That we got from the military program through public safety. It costs about twenty thousand dollars and we put a belly blade or blade on the bottom of it and it's a four-wheel drive dump truck and those things have been phenomenal. We have one more outfit and that will give us three of those plus two of our older dump trucks. And then this will replace the two that just need to go down the road. Uh because they're so bad. So I kind of made some suggestions of some other things like a mini excavator. We're looking to use that because when we're in the roadways, uh it's a lot easier to do big graves with those. And it's also easier to replace valves in the in the city right away than it is using our backhoe. The other problem running into with the backhoe, when we're up in the cemetery. It's a very big, very heavy piece of machinery and we have to be very careful because if you're trying to dig over another person's grave. There's that chance that it could collapse and crush the the ball just below. With a, with a mini excavator, you can actually get into the roads a lot easier and then dig the same depth, so it's a smaller piece of machinery. Also with this, this would be on the same rotation. We'd look to actually rotate these things out, so we're not in the same position we are now. Of having to pick up the bill for things that we should have rotated out years ago. So.
Are you looking for guidance from Council as to? Moving forward with specific items or?
What we've done is we've actually sat down with the staff and we've picked their brains. They're the ones with boots on the ground. Instead of me coming up here and telling you everything I want, ask them, what do you think were? And this is the list that they have come up with saying, these are priorities and this is what we need to have to get the job done first. And so that first, the first uh item on the s- last page.
Forty-nine.
On page sixteen, that would be the first order that we would purchase things in if if that authorized. And that would be the Bobcat, the two patchers, the medium-sized dump trucks and the Kubota tractors. I know it doesn't make much sense, but we wait like a month, month and a half, two, and then but go back and purchase the other. Equipment and put that into rotation. Much like public safety, we'd want to get on a rotation basis like we talked about.
So are are you suggesting that we spend almost a million dollars on equipment in this current year?
It would be this year and then the next year.
So what's our current equipment budget?
So the memo provided from David here, the which budget? And David, I'm sure can answer some questions. Do you have any question?
Kind of gives us some idea of where we're at right now, as far as what we have in cash and what we have invested. For our local, our major, our improvement, street fund and our M dot fund. Um. When I think about this, um the fact that we really want to concentrate on our roads. It's it's a big item for the Council, I believe, from my um experience over the last six months. Um if we can. Purchase our own equipment and maintain it and not have to. Hire third parties to do the work. Some of the bills that come in from third parties are just astronomical. And if we're able to make the one-time purchase, maintain the equipment. And we have the ability to do the work ourselves, over time, it's gonna save us money. The other thing that I'm looking at is if we end up selling Maple uh Maple Grove, which I think we are. That's gonna give us maybe a million and a half to two million dollars. That will go into the general fund, hopefully, eventually. And if we use that money to maybe invest back into the roads. And what it takes to maintain them and fix them up, it makes a lot of sense. Uh currently, right now, um the major street fund has about one point three million. That. I wouldn't want to use all of it, but some could come out of that to handle the purchase of the equipment. The street fund or the local street fund has about a half million. And some of that could help. The uh major street fund has about two hundred thousand. We could tap into a little bit of that. And the fact that we're gonna have some uh revenue, some large revenue coming in from Maple Grove sale. I think if we put our heads together, we can over time purchase this equipment. And try to do a lot of the work internally and save a lot of money. And if we maintain the equipment down the road, which Jason has shown me that, you know, he's, he's done a lot of good work. For the DPW, we've made a ton of improvements, not only investing in our equipment and upgrading our equipment. But also redoing our building out there. The guys' attitudes are very good. And everybody seems to be working together and it makes a huge difference. So from my myself, my standpoint, myself as the treasurer, finance director here. I can find what we need to make this work if we seriously want to improve our roads.
Yep, I will. I will say, okay.
I totally agree with you. Those guys are my friends. I've seen times. And they are so proud of the changes that's been made. The the building looks beautiful. I used to wonder. Why in the world does this building look like this? Completely different now. It's just really, really nice and and you can tell that it's made a difference in them too. And I just always wondered, why do we have to always go get somebody else to do our work when we had our own guys?
Exactly.
And and I think that this is fantastic, I really do.
Thank you. Um so if I think about the comparison to public safety and their rotation, two questions come to mind first. We rotate our vehicles every three or four years. Is that part of this plan that they'll be rotated out every three years?
Some of this, I mean, would be rotated out, but not, not in three or four.
Okay.
Five. So I mean, it should be more likely because this stuff is contained a lot more. I'll be honest, there wasn't a lot of proactive things.
Right, right.
So that.
No, there's no question. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this will have to do a little bit longer, but at some point you have to make sure you. Get rid of your equipment while still has equity in it, right? So you can roll it into the next purchase, right? Instead of having no equity.
Right.
No junk right here.
Second, second question. You know, when we need a new fire truck, we wrote a grant and got a big chunk of change. Are there grant funds available for?
So. The uh Michigan Department of Transportation has uh in this area half a million dollars. Where that's a product available that they'll give us for free. We use it on our roadways.
So we're getting a grant for patch material. Right, for equipment.
So we're getting.
Okay. Right, so it's an, it's an in-kind gift. It's not cashed up, was paid for the equipment, but once you buy it.
But what's nice about that is you can take the money that you're gonna put into.
Sure, sure. No, I get it.
This road over here, that road over there.
So how much is a half a million dollars of this patch material cover?
So about one pallet is eighteen hundred bucks. It's a pretty good sized pallet. We're gonna see how hard it goes.
Right, what time are we doing this?
Late after, late morning.
Okay.
And see how well it works.
Right.
So the other thing to keep in mind is. The old equipment that we're rotating out, Jason has been able to run it through auctions. And sometimes get a nice chunk of money to help reimburse for the new equipment, so it's not like we're just. Coming up with the money, but not any help from other sources. We're gonna use that money to help purchase the new equipment. So it's not like we're gonna ju- just use our investments and that's it. We're gonna try to supplement it. Selling the old equipment through the auction and there's been, there's been some good, some pretty good money that has come through to help. But whatever we purchased so far, so.
Councilman Williams.
Oh, thank you, man. Um has leasing of any of the equipment that's listed been considered as well? I I say that because I come from, you know, the corporate arena and, you know, public's different. I understand what I want to ask.
Um I'm not sure if Jason's looked at that.
Yes.
Or if you want to comment on that. So that was a big thing to do several years back with the lease. A lot of the farmers would do the same thing with combine tractors. So what happened is they now got it down to where purchasing it and leasing it is pretty much.
Purchasing it and leasing it is pretty much the same. So there's not too many lease programs for the heavy equipment. It's basically. Buy it.
And you take care of it.
And we take care of it.
Is there a training component that employees will have to go through in terms of? Uh operating it?
Some of them, yes, mainly the patches. Everything else, they have already have their certification card. So in order to operate any type of equipment, you really have to go through them.
Which is another thing that we implemented recently.
That we weren't running an auction.
Get me through it, right?
Thank you, Mary. Um David, so. How feasible? And what timeframe do you see us being able to do this in?
Um I would say um. I mean, the money's there um. If we, if you know, if we take. You know, maybe the first chunk and wait a little bit. Um I'm not sure what your timeframe is, but I would think within the next nine months to a year. We could handle what he has presented here. Um with the understanding that Maple Grove will go through. Um I think the fact that we can fall back on that on certain projects coming down the road is really gonna help us. I don't wanna take the whole amount and just spend it right away, but it's something we can always follow on if if we need it. It's kinda like an emergency fund to me and it's gonna go right into the general fund. It's gonna boost that fund right up. So.
Okay. Do you um foresee any other budgetary deficits? Just, I guess we're what, three months out, two months out from even starting the next or approving the next budget?
Um this year, I haven't really seen any big major problems, um especially in the street funds here. I think we were talking about earlier. We had one big project we had to do for Clark uh Street. Uh we spent close to a little under a hundred thousand for that, but I think we're gonna possibly have a chance to get that back. After some testing that was done on the. Um whatever, you know, you guys did. It was caused by a third party, so I think that. Um hopefully down the road, we can get that money back. But I haven't really seen anything. I mean, we've we've spent a little bit more money than. What I anticipated, but it was because we had to, once Jason took over. Um there were some things that just needed to get handled. And so uh it was one of those things where, hey, you know. If we gotta do it, we gotta do it. And uh but there was money there. Uh the one good thing about. Um our investments right now is uh. Uh I just invested into a two million dollar CD that's earning five point five five percent. And it's a nine month CD, so um and I'm also looking at one that's for five months. Uh I'm not sure what's gonna happen with the the treasury rates, but. I think eventually they're gonna come down. I don't think they're gonna go up. So to lock in to some of that. And get that solid rate for a period of time. And keep rotating those. And looking for the highest interest rate is only gonna help us. So. But as far as anything that's happened so far, what I anticipate down the road, I think. We're moving just about uh the way that I thought. There's nothing really has come about that's. Uh that needed a big chunk of money or anything, so I feel pretty good.
I also think with the street projects, um last year we did Haven Road, which is the major street project, and I think it's every fourth year that that happens.
Yeah, we did two of them. We did the Haven Road and the North Albion Street Bridge.
Right, this the Haven Road one was an act- was the actual major street project, the major.
Yeah.
The funds that we get that we share and we do that every third or fourth year. And so whenever that fund comes up, we need that money to match that in order to be able to do that. Which is more than what we get a year in our millage. Um additionally, I know M dot has plans to redo Michigan Avenue at some point. I'm not saying it's in the next two or three years, but I would say next four to five years at least. And all of the parking areas that we approve to be parking on there, which amounts to about a mile of road. Uh would have to be paid for by the city to resurface that too. And that would have that, we'd have to have that money when M dot decided to do that project. So it's just something to think about as far as having to have money in street projects that things are gonna come up that we're gonna need money for.
Right, and back to, yeah, let me, let's talk about that point there. So these same funds will come out of that same pot. Correct. Okay, so um forecasting that out, that's something that you've already considered as well. Uh being that we have to make that match. When when we do get the funding for the roads, we still have to have the money to put up for the match.
Right.
Right.
But that's that for another three years, three or four years?
Well, right, but you. I think it's every third year, maybe. It's either every third year or fourth year, so it'll be two more years or three more years.
Then the more you have and the more you.
And then I think that's around, depending on how big of a project we do, it's around five hundred thousand, six hundred thousand dollars. And Michigan Avenue, I would bet you would be close to a million dollars that we would have to pay.
Yeah. Um also, if you read uh below my numbers there that um show you the investments in the cash. Um ours, our uh ours, our street funds usually end up with a positive amount. I'm anticipating two hundred eighty three thousand dollar. Revenues over expenditures for the major street fund, so that will also get added to the investments. Um so whenever we have a surplus in a fund, those idle funds get added, we get invested as well. So. Um it's not like that's all we have every year. Hopefully it goes up a little bit, but once we spend some, it will go down. But um one thing to keep in mind is uh. If if we buy equipment. If it's used by other funds and it's not just used for like the cemetery or for one major fund. Then it's put into the equipment fund and we charge rent for it to the other funds. So there's a situation where all the money doesn't have to come from the street funds to purchase equipment. Other funds can contribute. But transfers. Into the equipment fund to help substantiate that, to to pay for that. So when we buy this equipment, Jason and I will sit down and I'll say now, is this a piece of equipment where numerous funds will benefit from it? If it will, then it ultimately has to be purchased out of the equipment fund. And then we rent monthly based on the usage. To get revenue back into the equipment fund to so to to help handle the cost of that, not only to purchase it, but to maintain it. So.
And and as David talked about, the the sale price for Maple Grove was two point one million dollars, so that money will be coming to the city that when that sale's final. And additionally, there's money from the the Albion Trust that goes to Maple Grove that does come back to the general fund and you remember what's in the trust now?
Um which trust is?
The the Albion Trust for Maple Grove. I wanted to say that was close to a million dollars.
Over a million dollars, yeah. I think about one point two million.
Yeah, that's additional funds that will also come back to the general fund as well at that point, from my understanding what Colin said, so.
Yeah, I mean, that was actually what I was just gonna say is that the, once the, once the sale for Maple Grove is consummated under the terms of the trust, the trust automatically dissolves. And the money comes back to the city.
So, yeah, so there's significant money there for those items, but it's.
So when you take the one point two and you add what we're gonna get from the sale, it could be close to three million dollars.
Right.
To reinvest back into the city. Um well smartly, you know, maybe start with the roads and some other projects down the road.
Okay, um I know that this is our current conversation is about equipment. Um but I don't want to put um. I don't want to, I I don't wanna dedicate the money yet from these different sales. Because we also have other issues that we have not addressed throughout the city as well. So um. Before we get to earmarking uh these these dollars, let's have further conversations about. What 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 our priorities are.
Right, and that's why we wanted to bring these to you now so that you could look at that and and hopefully give us direction where we wanna go and how we wanna start with it, so.
Appreciate it, yeah.
So I think, you know. As far as my memory can go, in the past three and a half years, I've been sitting in this seat. At every single council meeting, the only topic that has come up at every single meeting has been roads. I think if we are. Doing our due diligence for our constituents who have complained, and I got another. Comment today how a resident had to put money into their suspension. Because of the roads. I mean, this is a priority. And we need to move forward and we need to make decisions because we have so many roads. That need addressing. And if you're hearing from people like I'm hearing, this definitely needs to be addressed.
My question is uh that along that line in terms of dissatisfaction and embarrassment of our roads. What uh do you see as immediate um? Improvement that we, maybe this summer even, you know, what what can we tell our constituents? In terms of this is happening or by next year this is happening. What are some of the immediate things or short term goals that you have? With this equipment?
Well, we've tried to prioritize the roads based on how bad they are. And how much traction it's wanted as well. And so what we're going to do is stay, everybody already established that, and so we'd like to just use this. To to do it, to continue with that same list. What's nice about this. We don't have to go back and do it again.
Right.
Four times a year. So it's like you never get caught up. And so. We're still gonna address the worst roads first um. For the best we can, unless it's so, like I said, Keener Street. Broadwell Street is getting really close to that.
Huntington Boulevard.
Some of some of the worst streets, we won't be able to make a difference with this, but like if you go down east or yeah, East Erie from downtown and there's that strip down the center. Um you know, we could mill that out and fill it in with this and that road would be like brand new practically. That would make a huge difference on some of those roads, which will make it last much longer. We can get to other roads that we need to get to.
This doesn't create the hum that you always feel when you throw a patch into the hole. It just is, it goes completely level plus there. And so that's where it's gonna be a game changer and the fact that it sticks for five years compared to. To to when it gets peeled up from us, bowing or whatever. This is supposed to be a great seal and it's pallets that have been using it, what we've heard.
And and I'm been waiting, I was gonna share this at manager comments because I don't have any other things to share, but. We were notified today that we are gonna receive three million uh seventy two thousand five hundred dollars for streets uh. Through federal grants, which is gonna redo Erie Street, I believe, from Superior to Albion Street. Uh Darrell Apple Street and all of your roads, Lincoln, Edwards.
That are going forward.
Yes, yeah, those are all gonna be redone and I believe that's for next year. We put that in the email for us to. It's gonna be announced and yes, but um. But that's coming out, so uh there's another three million dollars for streets that we just got. There there's there are so many projects going on next year in town. I'm not sure you'll be able to drive anywhere through town, so.
So so since since this material comes in on a pallet. Does that mean that we can patch even after the asphalt plants are closed?
Right, I'm sure there'll be a temperature issue with that. You probably can't put it down when it's cold.
But I mean, you could put it down when it's forty.
Right, the cement plants are closing in September.
It has to be dry. But yes, it does everything by itself. That's why it's such a big trailer. In our box just can, our pickup style trucks can't do it. That's why it's going to the next size up.
Congratulations. I hope to see the results.
Is is this something, you you want us to bring pieces to the council over time as we've been, we feel we can fund it? Is that?
Yeah, we need to bring, just continue to bring back, I agree with Donovan and I do agree with you as well. Um ma- I'm at a mayor. Yeah, we need to make sure, you know, like you said, fight in due portions and I'm quite sure that's where you're coming from. That a big lump all at the same time, but let's start where we can to make our city better.
Yeah, the one suggestion. A good chunk of it now. And then. Give us a little, give us a breather for a second.
I think if we can get this done, I think our residents will be so pleased.
They will.
Start working now. At least we can say we're starting to work. Yeah. Uh that's all they, that's all they've been asking. Yeah, we'll ask to make the decisions to move forward with preparing the roads. So I appreciate your work on this, Deputy Chief Karen of Director Clark. Thank you for giving us information on budgets so that we have. A little peace of mind knowing that it's not gonna bankrupt the city. Because you move forward. Uh so, yes, I I think, like I said before, it's a good top priority.
Yeah, I think it'll be money well spent, um especially with Jason in charge, the way he's taking taking care of everything and maintaining everything and. And just doing things the right way. Um. Like you were saying earlier, the attitude of the employees are just great, you know, and. I've had a few stop by my office and have talked to me and said, man, things are just looking up and up, you know, and I said, well. That's sort of the way it's supposed to be, you know, so I think it's a. All a good thing.
So. You might be able to re-present something at next council meeting.
Yeah.
Dollars and cents and what you can cover with those dollars.
Jason, maybe you can. I'll give us an idea of what you can get for what you're gonna sell. Which will, but both together. That'll give us an idea of what we ultimately have to spend.
What new streets you're going to add to.
Increasing, increasing five.
All right, future agenda items.
Let's go to H.
Yeah, let's go to H.
Support.
So this resolution is to approve a project agreement for Michigan Trail Fund. On your desktop, you have a copy of the agreement. We just need to make the final approval. We have a motion and support.
Put it away.
So again, this is funding for the project.
This is a a one hundred thousand dollar project uh to finish uh the expansion three projects for the Albion River Trail. It will extend the trail from the Albion Street Bridge up to Austin Avenue. Uh I believe most of, some of that's on the east, yeah, the east side. The most of it's on the west side up where Harvard used to be there. Uh and then it will also extend the trail from uh Austin Avenue to uh McIntosh Park as well. Uh which will combine into the walking path at McIntosh Park. So you can ride your bike all the way.
Right now, I'm just trying to figure out, because remember we had Mark Lally here. Couple years ago and they were talking about how that road to Marshall was arrested and trailed.
That's what I thought.
So this will be like a deep.
This is kinda connecting the park and and being able to go that way into it and bringing people back out to the trail.
Yeah. Cool.
Questions or comments? Ready quick, Michael? Did you have a question? Uh yes. Are we, are we at the end? Why can't you tell about Juneteenth?
Not yet.
Gotcha. We're voting on approving the the funds for the trail.
Also, Member Williams?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Oliver?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
And Mayor Stine?
Yes. Future agenda items. Anything that council would like to see in an upcoming agenda? There, but then Jackson?
Yes, um I would like to know what is going on with the homes that have been burnt. We've already asked that, it hasn't come back. Are we taking care of those issues? Is that?
Are there specific homes?
You have the ones on Chestnut, Chestnut Street in the corner, whatever that side. I had people complaining to me today about. That um I'm gonna use these words as well. It's, you know, we may, we did approve. For the consultant to come in and uh. Charge the landlords a certain amount of money to uh make sure that their properties and everything. Are current and they look good, but we're not doing anything for the people that have things that are destroyed. And they're not being tore down very quickly. And it's looking terrible, so I would like an update on what we are doing.
We have a house at Chester and.
Yes.
Mulberry and here.
Three houses on Chestnut and then there's also a house up, uh, on. This one, what is that street? What's behind Chestnut?
And the other items?
It might be, but sometimes they have to do a little something more. We need to know what's going on.
So the, the noted.
So, did you?
It's for our future agenda. I'll, I'll, I'll answer, I can answer part of councilwoman.
So we have landlords feeling that they're not appreciative in Alvin since we put on this. This new, um, I'd call it a cold.
Certification.
Certification, thank you, certification due to the amount of the permits now. Um, I had one and my resident had a roof that was put on for, I think it'd been on for three years. And they just came out in May and looked at it and told them they had to come and get a. A permit for, but never, never had been on for that long. And there's some other things as well. So we need to check into, uh, what that is really saying.
So is that?
That's another discussion, yes. The certification, certification, yes.
Any other items? Right, uh, public comment. At this time, if there's anybody in the gallery that would like to stand and address the council, usually do so. What is your name and address in three minutes of yours?
Marsha Starkey, four nineteen Allen Place. First off, this has been a great meeting. I could say ta-da about a lot of stuff, but. I actually was going to ask you, with that whole water issue with the four hundred thousand gallons. A day that we were, you know, leaking, it was my backyard. I'm wondering if that's gonna like a water bills. I mean, people on our street are asking, you know, is our, are, by our water bills go down? Do we really need another water tower? I don't understand all that, but have we taken that into consideration? That was four hundred thousand and some people are saying. It's been going on for like fifteen years.
You and I can talk.
Okay, anyway.
I am your precinct council member.
And. You and some chair miss you. So that's it. Thank you.
Here around ten sixteen South Superior Street. Um, in twenty twenty-two, there was a constitutional amendment, um. Report should add to the constitution, the constitution rules of two to make voting easier. And one of that, one of the guys, uh, parts of that was to allow Michigan to have, I guess, like nine days or so of early voting. Um, so I think that has been being implemented. Um, but what I noticed is that it's only. I guess voters would have to go to Marshall to vote for those early, those kind of extra early days. And I was wondering, has the council. Considered or is there a possibility? Is that something where it has to be in Marshall? Could Albion have a? A site here? Is that something that, I mean, obviously we did it here, we might not pay for it, but I'm curious if, if that's something that the council can discuss because. Um, that's a, a major change to just the structure of our elections. And I think that, you know, especially. Uh, residents who have issues with like, uh, you know, mobility or transportation, it might be an issue. So I think, uh, you know. Council, if you all could look into that, I think it would bring the benefit of that expanded voter time to, um. Duration to, to residents and, uh, I do believe. The water tower issue is a thing I think city may have been under. Well, we're supposed to be in terms of water capacity. So I think that might have been the, the things here. So thank you.
Don't want that.
Interesting. This was a good meeting. It's kind of encouraging. I guess I can go to the park and tell them we're getting ready to get some roads fixed around here. So that's, it's really encouraging. Um, speaking of roads, um, now last year. Um, I forgot his name. I guess it's the new street department supervisor. He did a good job. He took, he tore down that big. Tree that was falling apart on Hall Street that I've been trying to get rid of for twenty seven years and he took up that curb. That my sister-in-law had fell and twisted her ankle on. So I'm wondering. Uh, speaking about the streets, is, is it any plan to, uh, put, get that curb put in and maybe get that big stump moved from the neighbor yard? There on Hall Street.
That man right there is one you want to talk to.
Okay, and, uh, you know. I guess this probably was discussed, but I guess I've been elected to carry this bone too. Um. Was it any discussion about dispensaries coming to Albany? Was it ever a discussion on that and as, as far as how much revenue is it a bringing? Because it seems to be something that we're missing. It seems like we're missing some money some kind of way. I don't know. So have y'all discussed that? Is, is that up for discussion for dispensaries? I see that we could. Grow here, but don't you, don't somebody think we ought to be able to distribute it and stop people from going to Battle Creek and. Jackson and all those other places. I mean, seems like it's money to me now. I, I'm not in a position to make those decisions, but. That would seem like, uh, I think we could put that money toward the streets. But yeah, it's been a conversation about that. And I just wondered, well, I know years ago we discussed, you know, about the dispens reasons. I didn't, I didn't know what the pros and cons was on that, but you know, that might be, uh, that might be beneficial. I don't know. Well, yeah, I'd like to get my curb fixed though. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council people. Uh, Mayor Snyder, Assistant Manager Kip from your district manifestation. I'm Jim Hotzma. I'm two forty-nine Snow Avenue over in Bedford Township, the Battle Creek Address. So I'm to the state representative and I too want to indicate the positivity of, of the meeting. I apologize for my attire. It wasn't a suit earlier. I changed, uh, to do some doors knocking. You can tell where. And consequently I didn't have time. Uh. We are going to what's left of Blues at the Bone, but this has been such a riveting, interesting meeting that, uh, we decided to miss the main act. Um, I'm excited for what the Compton and to what Marsha Starkey indicated will be coming. Uh, I'm pleased that Congressperson Walberg has requested this three point five million dollar appropriation for. Uh, this mid-market, uh, range housing for seniors. Uh, I'm hopeful that appropriation is included in the final budget. Uh. Perhaps it already is. It was unclear on that, but, uh, that that will be coming to Battle, uh, to Albion. And I, uh, also want to indicate I am two of mine that. Uh, the issue of streets is, I think, the fundamentally most important issue to quality of life in Albion. Uh, when I'm here, uh, the streets are much poorer in quality than Battle Creek, a higher populated community. Um, so I'm really, uh, enthusiastic, I guess, uh. Is, is a good word for it in relation to what the assistant chief and what the finance director indicated may be done. I expect you to do your due diligence in relation to that, but I, I do agree with the mayor that that's one of the most important issues that I hear about. And I have it in myself when I'm over here. We're in the budget process in the state house. Uh, we're right squarely in the middle of it. I'm advocating again for some enhancement grant dollars to. Albion and, uh, organizations in the surrounding community. I'm reasonably confident. Despite the fact we have fewer resources than we had in twenty twenty-three, that those kinds of dollars will be forthcoming. And I'll be excited to report what happens by the end of June as we're expected to, in fact. Uh, finalize the budget now by the first of July and we're on target to do that. If you have any other questions, you're welcome to see me after the meeting.
Any other public? Right, same no moment. Uh, we'll go, uh, to the city manager's report.
Uh, there's two more things to add with the grant funding that we're receiving from Debbie Stavno's office is ninety-six thousand dollars for public safety. Um, I know some of that is to replace our body cameras and our in-car cameras. Um, I'm not sure what it was all for. Uh, Lindsay helped write that. We put in for three million originally. A lot of it was fire stuff. Then we found out we couldn't get the fire stuff. So this is all police related, but I don't recall what. All those items were. And then additionally, uh, one point six million for repairs to the depot as well. Um, and so, uh, we had received, uh, three hundred thousand dollars from.
Yeah, uh, Marsha, remember where we got the train depot?
No. Yeah, from Dr. Graham. And so, uh, with, with this one point six million, we should be able to get most of that work done to repair the depot and the issues that are there.
So we are hoping to have one of the better looking and servicing train depots in the area. We've been getting good news, um, you know, with the Tavas with senior housing, we're getting. Funding for roads, train depot. So yes, a lot of hard work over a long period of time. Have gone into working with not only Congressman Walberg, um, Stavno. You know, our representative Hadsman. These are partnerships that have been long coming. So, um. It's great that we have the working relationship for these entities so that Albion can bring anybody. Anything else?
It's all I had.
Councilwoman comments?
Okay. It's my turn. Uh, Juneteenth will be the fifteenth of, of June this year. Uh, it will be at Holland Park and, uh. We will be starting at Holland Park at eleven o'clock. I'm sorry. I didn't know about your streets before. Because, uh, we didn't want anyone to get hurt. We have vendors, um, uh, Mrs. Amos and Mr. Lopez will be doing food this year. House, house, games, table tennis. We have three-on-three basketball, molten bars, food. Uh, horseshoes, story tent and the kids will come to the story tent, uh, to hear a story will get to take a free book. When they leave and, uh, as we promote. Kids learning face painting. We have fire truck is going to be there. Uh. Music will be from eleventh until from, I would say eleven thirty until four airtight. And then at five o'clock, we will start the gospel fest. This year is a little bit different. We have different, a lot of different. Music groups that will be doing it. We will have the dancing dolls that will be a gun, uh, basketball fest tune this year again. Uh, Friday evening, we are going to have a movie in the park. And we'll have hot dogs, chips and cupcakes. We, so you come and see a movie and, and enjoy some. Refreshments with us and we're not quite sure, but we're trying to get Black Panther two. There's a, just, just a lot that's going to be going on next year. So we ask you to come join in with us and enjoy the day.
Yes, and, oh, our healthcare providers are very interested. And come, more people are coming on board in terms of, we're going to Albion Juneteenth. Okay, uh, but we're going to have blood pressure checks as well as diabetic checks or, or other. Life-saving, uh, monitoring, you know, activities and things like that. So several people will be here from outside of Albion. So hopefully we will have our Albion people here to enjoy the day as well as to, uh. Take the opportunities that are going to be available.
Councilwoman Waller, that we had granted to.
Yeah, thank you so much. Did we ever discuss about the, um, artistic signs around Albion?
We did, and I think we were looking into. Um, pricing for the.
Did we have specific requests?
I did on my streets.
On yours, okay. I didn't remember specific requests for them. I know we talked about it. I think you're getting pricing on the signs, but I haven't. Jason, do you remember? That, that was an Elmer question, I believe, and I'll check with him.
Councilwoman Williams.
Yep, um, and again, I'd like to reiterate the father-son picnic this weekend in Victory Park hosted by, uh, Greg Camp. Um, everyone's welcome. Come out, bring the kids, uh, bring your daughters too. Bring all the kids. Um, it should be a very good event. It's starting at eleven. It's going to go till six o'clock. There's different, um, things that he'll be presenting as well. So there'll be a lot of stuff for the kids to do over the course of that time, Brian. So. If you want to get the kids out the house, bring them out on Saturday.
Sorry, but just to piggyback again on Juneteenth, also there will be a three-on-three contest as well, basketball contest. So there is information that has been sent out. We can get a hold of playwright. Um, and that would, that should be very eventful as well. And then also Mr. Reed, uh, will be out there with his wagon as well. For another vendor.
Tony Hartness.
Um, a couple of things. One, the marijuana application that you had at your desk needs to be turned in to the clerk. Can't go home with you, but just make sure you give those back to the clerk. Um, number two, um, to answer, um, Councilwoman Jackson's question about the burned down houses, the notice to abate. For those properties that code enforcement gate just expired at the end of May. So they'll be filed either this week or next week. So those will be in, in the legal process. Um, and then just so councils are aware, there was a citizen question about, uh, whether or not the city allows for, um. Marijuana retailers, we do, but within the, um, overlay districts which surrounds the industrial park.
I just want to say thank you for those who participated in the fifth grade graduation last Friday at, um. At Goodrich Chapel. It was very well attended and we had our own Dr. Chris Coleman. Was originally from Albion, was the keynote speaker, uh, and is a medical doctor in, well, at John, now at John Hopkins University. So, uh, yeah, it was a nice event and thank you for those who were able to attend.
Yeah, I was just going to say congratulations to all the graduates this year.
Even the fifth graders.
Yeah, the fifth graders and the, and the high school students as well. Definitely.
Opportunity in all the surrounding schools.
Yeah.
They all had a nice graduation.
And the parade seemed to be a, a very successful event, uh, seeing all the graduates out there. So definitely.
I did want to take it back a little bit on what, um, the assistant city manager. Uh, stated in regards to the funding that we have been approved for. Um, just wanted to claim again, um, you know, we have working relationship with Congressman Walberg. Senator Stavno, Representative Hadsman to give the funds here to Albion. Um, just wanted to say to our partners like the Community Foundation, um. United Way, other entities that kind of also write letters of support to help get those funded. So it's not just. You know, one entity doing all this. We work in collaboration. So I just wanted to say how much I appreciate. The working relationships that we have, uh, with the different offices that can help support Albion. Um, but also the work that our city manager has done with all of the directors to get the information that's needed. To be able to have a successful grant be put forth and all of the work that the directors, the department directors have. They put in that information too, to make sure that all of our teeth are frosted, our eyes are dotted. So that these applications get approved. So there's a lot of work that goes into this, um. But just want to say how thankful I am to be a part of the team that can work together to bring in millions of dollars directly. Any other comments? Right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Power of favor, say aye. Meeting adjourned eight twenty-six.